Good evening, welcome to the, good evening everyone. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of September 16th, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, could you take the role, please?
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton. Mr. McDougall.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
I would like to move to excuse Councilmember Moulton.
Motion by Ms. Cleland McGrath, a second by Ms. Hubick to excuse Ms. Moulton. Any, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, item three is announcements and committee reports. And I've got a few announcements here. First of all, I'd like to thank HF Sinclair and of course, our Parks Department, Parks Staff, sponsoring the Fueling Education Fund Run that happened at Washington Park on Sunday. I misplaced my running shoes, so I did not attend or participate, so, but thank you there. Also coming up this week, just a heads up, on Thursday, September 19th, the city is running a disaster preparedness exercise. So if you see activity over by the Chandler Square or at the United Methodist Church on H and over in Washington Park, essentially what we're doing is exercising some of the more difficult elements of a disaster, not necessarily a big scenario, but from about 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, expect to see some activity in those areas that include evacuation, sheltering, feeding, transportation, water distribution. Again, the area of Chandler Square and the Methodist Church on 8th and then Washington Park. Also a reminder, always a big popular event, this Saturday, the 21st, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon at the operations facility on 37th and D Avenue. And this is residential cleanup day. And again, you can bring your household residential garbage, including furniture and yard waste. Again, one load per customer. And then appliances will be accepted for a fee, but you do need to verify your Anacortes residency. Typically, you can just bring a utility bill that works along with your identification. Oyster Run, a reminder, Oyster Run is this Sunday, the 22nd. Also, expect to receive your A-Town magazines. We expect to deliver that next week. And to highlight that one, there will be a lot of focus on the comprehensive plan. And so we'll start with some presentations tonight, but again, pretty heavily focused on planning. And speaking of planning, one event coming up on Tuesday, the 24th, is the first meeting of the Climate Policy Advisory Team, also known as CPAT. I try not to say CPAP, but it's CPAT, Climate Advisory Advisory Team. Again, Tuesday, the 24th, 5:00 PM at City Hall. So that's a week from tomorrow. And all that information, plananacortes.org. All you gotta do is type that into your browser and it takes you right to the Comprehensive Plan, 2025 Comprehensive page. So I don't know if they've updated the Tuesday meeting, but I'm sure it will be updated shortly on there. And then just a final reminder that we are doing paving in multiple residential areas. So again, please use caution. And thanks for your patience as we continue to improve the streets in Anacortes. I am going to ask that we jump to 3B. Still waiting on another awardee before I go to 3A. So unless I see any disagreement from council, I'll go ahead and go to 3B for our Economic Development Committee report.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. This will be a tag team effort, I think, and I'm just sort of giving a heads up to Bruce and Amanda. We had our Economic Development Meeting and again, it was a wonderful meeting. What we were detailing is what type of structure we're looking for by way of our work with Western Washington University. Meaning, as we expand upon the line of open end questions, you know, in some of the, in some of the questions and the answers that we are hoping that they give us, they're going to be able to order in priority their ideas for that particular question. And so if Amanda or Bruce, you would chime in at this point and go into a bit further detail, I would appreciate it.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. So the biggest thing that we were discussing was going over the outline and the questions that Western is partnering with us to develop and to put out to the community. So it'll be an online survey. We're understanding that it will also be a mailed survey, we're thinking, that will give people an opportunity to give us feedback on how they feel the city as a whole is doing, what are they looking for, what could we improve? Basic questions, do you live here? Do you work here? Do you own a business here? And then working with Western to provide some like basic if-then statements. If someone gets the survey and they both live here and work here, there are certain questions that we want to make sure to ask them. If they live here but don't work here, or if they work here but don't live here, how do we want to customize the survey to best get the information that we need from them in order to guide the next steps that the committee's gonna do? And we're meeting tomorrow, actually, to sit down with Western and go over this. So we'll have a bigger update next week.
All right, anything else? Any questions for Economic Development Committee? All right, we will go on to item 3C, Finance Committee Report.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
Finance Committee met last Thursday. And council representation, Ms. Cleland McGrath, Ms. Moulton and myself. First thing we covered was basically kind of like the sort of revenue, most recent revenue summary. So sales tax continues to be a bit down. Utility taxes, both private and public utilities, so are basically flat for the year. REIT continues to be down about 14%. Interesting data point, though, REIT is coming in with more units at smaller sort of REIT amount per unit, which essentially means like units selling at a lower price. So I think that probably means more smaller units going, actually moving on the market. And then building permit revenues are significantly down as well. The building has slowed way down. The ERP project, we've got a multi-departmental evaluation team. They've narrowed the RFP down to two, basically sort of lead vendors, if you will. And both of them, keynote there is, provide in-house support as opposed to third party, which is a kind of a key ask. And the team is looking at probably an 18-month implementation timeline for either system, really. So it's a major piece of work. Next piece, two more items. So the FEMA replacement funds for the Washington Park, like I guess wipeout that occurred a couple of years ago. We were able to like allocate those funds to purchase ladder truck and police cars and things like that. But prior to actually receiving the funds, we did an interfund loan to actually fund the purchases. And FEMA has been held up in reimbursing us. So the mayor and others in the department have basically been writing letters, contacting FEMA, also contacted our congressman, basically trying to get this moving along. So more to come on that. Worst case, like we look at, you know, if we haven't gotten reimbursement, I mean, we're still expecting reimbursement, but worst case, by the end of the year, if we don't have it, we look to do a temporary line of credit. Final item, the budget process has begun and departments have begun inputting their numbers. We're actually, we looked at the calendar and realized that just the way the holidays and kind of Mondays line up, we're gonna really kind of try to aim for December 16th finish up, just because the next two Mondays are not good for, for meetings. So look to, you know, amongst everything else, we're gonna try to cram it in. Thank you.
Any questions for Finance Committee? Okay, I don't think Public Works Committee met.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
That's right, Public Works Committee did not meet. Mr. Young and Ms. Moulton weren't available. But the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, next on your list.
You're up, Mr. Walters.
Did, we did meet today. We started looking at our 2025 funding requests. We received $535,000 worth of requests. And assuming we pursue the event center, we'll have available revenue of about $212,000. So we will meet at least once, maybe twice more to continue review of those requests and figuring out where we think we fit into that overall funding pie before we have a recommendation for council review. And we're still hoping to move that along quickly so that the nonprofits that have requested this information, this money, know if they're getting it or not within a reasonable period of time so that they can make choices about how they want to backfill that if they don't get it.
All right, questions? All right, next up is Port City Liaison Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. We had a Port City Liaison Committee meeting on September 10th. We had a number of representatives from the port and from the city. Was actually Mr. Walters, the mayor, myself, and then also, Councilmember Fantini wasn't able to make it, so Councilmember Moulton sat in so she could see what was going on. And obviously, we had staff from the city also. We did a couple of city updates. We talked about the fact that the Samish Nation is, has a number of properties and at some point, will be putting it into trusts, at which point they will remove property taxes from the rolls. So we are working on having an agreement that would do fee in lieu of taxes so that the services would still be provided and the city would be covered by those, the city would be funded for those, providing those services. We, that, we used to have an agreement and it expired in 2016. So we are just working to get an updated one. We talked a little bit about the Depot Plaza update. We had received some funding from the county. Half of what we wanted, we were hoping for, but that will allow some planning to happen. And this Parks Department with, of Anacortes is working to collaborate with the port of Anacortes to make sure that it all flows together. And some of their master plans, since there is going to be most likely a street realignment, and then also some obviously development by the port. So that's good that we're all discussing tentatively. The goal would be to go out to bid in late summer or spring and then start construction in summer or fall of 2025. And that looks like most likely some kind of a brick plaza that would extend the farmer's market to allow more capacity. We talked a little bit about the ADOC and making sure everything is working there. Then we discussed the event venue. And really, the challenges we're seeing with the event venue, not challenges, but we've gone through a number of meetings. Now, the next step, which I believe Mr. Walters has talked about in other reports, is doing some kind of an interlocal to go for, to the next step of planning, which, or design to get and go out for bid. And then the, a second interlocal would be some kind of agreement for management between the city and the port. So those, those need to get underway sooner than later, ideally sometime in October. But working backwards, that would mean that we need to make sure the development review framework plan that has been submitted by the port, among some other applications, are reviewed and moving forward in a timely manner within the city's permitting department. So there's a number of things moving along, but if we work backwards to when we want the, when we would like to have the event center completed by, that means we've got to make sure we can be going out for bid, we can get it to the public, and we can also make sure that we've got interlocals and an understanding of what that capacity is gonna look like. Very clearly, though, is that we've got to get to a point where that design is done and bid is made because we don't know if we can afford it until that is completed. So we are being really clear about, there's a number of hurdles to still get through, but we would like to ideally keep them in, moving forward in a timely manner. Finally, we talked a little bit about just, you know, declining revenue when it comes to sales tax and increased labor costs. And then the port mentioned that they're working on a marine highway with Port Angeles, which just is ideally getting some of the containers that we see on semi trucks going down I-5, kind of getting them to more of a barge, using the waterways instead. And that was it.
Questions? All right, Personnel Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
The Personnel Committee met on Friday, September 13th. It was myself, Councilmember Cleland McGrath, HR and Labor Relations Director Kendall Moyle, and the mayor. Topics included, we went over our recruiting update. We hired four new positions in the month of August. Three of those were not seasonal or temporary and one was a seasonal slash temporary employment. We also had five exits. Most of these were in the police force and all voluntary exits. We currently have eight active job postings, 13 open positions total. One for Associate Planner, Building Inspector, Contract, Public Defense Attorney, Legal Assistant, Senior Engineering Technician, Water Treatment Plant Operator. Two vacancies on firefighter paramedics, and then five vacancies for police officers. We also reviewed the 2025 additional FTR, Full-Time Employee Requests from various departments, and those will be coming forward to the full council as part of the budget process that we start when the mayor submits the budget to us. We also reviewed and got an update on the NeoGov recruitment platform. And we had a little tutorial right there in the room that kind of showed how it's improved and how much easier it is to navigate the jobs, which is great. So it went live that week. And the employment opportunities are on city, on our city page now, and it directs applicants to apply through NeoGov. So you used to have to kind of do some bouncing around to find different positions and now everything is centrally located and really flows nicely. Also similar to the update from Finance, it was told to us that we have two people still in the running for our ERP software. And we were also very pleased that both of those have in-house help that come with them as opposed to farming out any support that we, we might need.
All right, any questions there? Any other committee reports that I might have missed? I missed one announcement, just a reminder, there's a, commissioners are gonna host, County Commissioners are hosting a public hearing on the Gwemas Island Ferry Fair schedule. That's tomorrow, 3:00 PM on the 17th, in the hearing room or remotely. You can go on their website for more info there.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
One more announcement before your presentation. I just wanted to remind everyone that on September 26th, I'll be hosting a town hall at the library. Even though I am the member of Ward 3 or the representative of Ward 3, all are welcome to attend, just to talk about things that we're working on here on council. And last time, we had some great feedback and ideas from our constituents. So again, that'll be 6:00 PM, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, September 26th, in the library community room.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna move back up to 3A to do some good stuff. And this is Mayor Award of Merit, this is a presentation. And Ms. Hsu is gonna talk, talk about a couple of our superstar employees. And then I'll get to do some gripping and grinning and give some nice gift cards out. But hopefully, the envelope's not empty because I pried it open, but no, I'm kidding. Ms. Hsu.
Thanks, Mayor, council members of the audience. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce that Mayor Miller is honoring two exemplary employees of Access Fiber, Anacortes Fiber Internet with the Mayor's Award of Merit. On August 2nd, at 9:25 AM, a PSC subcontractor accidentally severed the city's fiber line serving the skyline area of Anacortes. This impacted approximately 950 customers. In response, the city mobilized significant resources, dedicating 90 hours of staff time to repair the damage. I'm proud to highlight the exceptional efforts of Dawson Ammer.
And Joe Edwards.
And Joe Edwards, who each contributed 30 hours each to restore that service. Joe went above and beyond by reporting to work on his scheduled day off and working through Friday night into Saturday morning. Despite having plans to celebrate his birthday with family, he returned on Saturday to continue with the repairs. Dawson similarly worked through the night and returned on Saturday to complete the repair. He also spent much of Sunday addressing customer concerns that had come in through email. Thanks to their dedication, the majority of customers were back in service by 8:20 PM on August 3rd. So tonight, Mayor Miller is honoring Joe Edwards and Dawson Ammer with the Mayor's Award of Merit. Access Anacortes Fiber Internet is committed to being managed, locally managed, affordable and a reliable internet service provider for our community. While service outages are unfortunate, we deeply appreciate the extraordinary efforts of our small, yet mighty team. We've used this experience to enhance our processes, including a redundant path now serving the West End area with plans to build redundancy into all of our service areas. Additionally, the city has submitted a claim to PSC, the holder of the Right-of-Way Permit, and we have received reimbursement for the staff time and materials required for the repair. Today, Joe is accompanied by his wife, Mackenzie, and his son, Liam. Thank you both for your unwavering support of and commitment to the city of Anacortes.
All right, we are on to item number four. This is public comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public wishes to address the council anything that is not on our agenda. So if you're here to talk about 6A, the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, we'll call on you then. But before that, I've got a few folks signed up. And I will start with Zua Mu, Senior Activity Center. Always, if you could say your name and city you live in, that would be helpful for the record.
Let's see, okay. Zua Mu, Anacortes. Dear Anacortes City Council Members, on August 26th, the council unanimously approved a $50,000 contract to Burke Consulting to conduct the senior center needs assessment project. I review the contract appendixes and the exhibit attached. $50,000 gets us a project kickoff meeting, a questionnaire, a web-based survey using Survey Monkey, a workshop, and a written report. And it might include interviews with other senior service providers in the area. This appears to be a survey project to gather inputs from seniors and the service providers. For market survey project, key driver for the cost is number of completed surveys and the complexity of the analysis for the results. Methods involved to complete the survey, phone, web-based, and in-person, time zone covered, would also impact the cost. And since most of the data appears to be collected via a web-based survey tool with a qualitative analysis, the cost can be extremely competitive. We would like the council to help with the taxpayer to understand why there is no RFP process and the competitive bidding for this project. Upon reviewing the contract and appendix, I also have the following feedback to the council members and the Mayor Miller. Number one, under bullet point, number one, Appendix A, Compliance and Regulations. It reads, everything has to comply with U.S. Department of Transportation, Washington State DOT. Is this senior center assessment focusing on transportation only? If that's the case, can this be combined with a transportation survey? Number two, in Appendix A, second bullet point, Appendix B, B as a boy, of 49 CFR Part 21 was referenced in the last sentence. However, there is no Appendix B in the contract and its subsequent attachments. Three, there is no mention in the contract on the minimum number of completed interviews/surveys, age and gender distribution to make sure the survey results are statistically valid to assess the targeted audience in Anacortes. Last one, if contact information were provided to the contractor for survey purposes, there should be a clause for confidentiality and the removal of all the contact information from the contractor's system upon completion of the project. So I encourage the council members and the Mayor Miller to revisit this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, I've got Linnea McCord, and subject, topic is movie theater.
Linnea McCord, Anacortes. So the city council reversed course on buying the cinema. And the question in the first place is, why did they want to buy it? Well, for $500,000 and potentially $800,000 with interest, Councilman Ryan Walters was quoted in the paper saying, "Our objective in purchasing the property is to make this messy arrangement go away." So why did they rescind the purchase offer on September 9th? $280,000 of additional repairs that would have to be done to the building. So here's some background. The city of Anacortes approached these third parties to build the first-run movie theater. Anacortes Cinema is one of only two first-run theaters now in Skagit County. The private third parties did build the theater on the land, on the city's land. David Saunders was the sole owner since the early 2000s until his death, and now the owner is Nancy Saunders. In the sublease and assignment, Clause 18, it says, "The lessor shall not sublet nor assign this lease or any interest therein without the prior written consent of the lesser, which consent shall not be unreasonably withheld." That is a legally enforceable standard under contract law. It means you better be careful. Without fair, solid, or substantial cause or reason, there's a problem. The sublessor or assignee, the new private owner of the building, was required to have at least five years of experience in movie theater management or operations. So what's the source of this messy arrangement? Well, the way we're set up, we have a planning committee with members, Ryan Walters, Christine, Cleland McGrath, and Carolyn Moulton, who met with the theater owner. And it was clear that they disagreed with the requested change for Clause 18 at a time when there were active purchasers for the building for $550,000. So instead of allowing the reasonable change, I repeat, the reasonable change that was requested in the lease. Instead, you almost bought a movie theater with our tax dollars, which could end up paying $800,000 at a time when the market is very unstable and that would be very unwise to do. So the question is, the way we're set up with the planning committee, it usurps effective participation of the city council and the public, and it's not just on this one issue. For those of us that have been watching since a long time, I've been here off and on, mostly on, since January, watching and listening, it is a problem. So what should the city do now? Well, think about the potential evidence of unreasonably withheld. Go back and look at the comments some city council members made refusing to allow the request. David Saunders did not have the five years required. He's operated it 20 years successfully. My suggestion, immediately allow the reasonable change in the lease and let the owner sell the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Suzanne Roner, also movie theater.
Suzanne Roner, Anacortes. Thank you for this opportunity. I want to echo Linnea's comments. I think this council walked away from an opportunity where everyone could win. The movie building owner who wanted to sell our land, the community who wanted a theater. And as stated, we almost ended up with a boondoggle. I don't think anybody on the council has any experience in movie theater operation. And I'm just very disappointed that an opportunity was missed where everybody could have been satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you. I have John Wilkerson signed up for the GHG report. But if you want to wait to ask your questions when we have that up, that would be fantastic. Anybody else want to comment on anything that's not on our agenda? Okay. None online? Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Item 5A and B. Counsel.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
I move approval of consent agenda items A and B.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McDougal, second by Mr. Young to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now on to item six, which is other business. And this is 6A, Draft Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventory Report. Presentation from Makers/Parametrics. Presentation, where we're of course encouraging questions from the public and the council. And I know, I know we have some guests that are remoting in. And, but I'll let Mr. Coleman introduce this topic. Mr. Coleman, when you're ready.
All right, thank you, Mayor, council, members of the public. So tonight, we're going to have a presentation from Beth Miller with Parametrics. Parametrics is our subconsultant with, under Makers, who is our main consultant. And with Makers today, we also have Katie Saunders. They're going to be giving a presentation about our greenhouse gas inventory. This greenhouse gas inventory is going to be used to inform the development of our new greenhouse gas emissions reduction sub-element. That is a required element, a required portion of our newly required greenhouse gas or newly required climate element of the comprehensive plan. So I think the, I'll just turn it over to Katie or Beth, whoever is going to take it first and start the presentation. And then afterwards, we'll have council discussion and then questions from the public.
All right, Katie or Beth? Hopefully you can hear us.
Perfect, I will, perfect. I will very quickly introduce myself as John mentioned. I'm Katie Saunders. Makers is leading the climate element for this project. But I'm going to hand everything off today to Beth. And John Phillips from Parametrics is also here as they are leading the sub-element for the emissions and the greenhouse gas inventory. So the climate element is split into two sections, and you're going to be hearing from both of us throughout, over the next several months. But tonight, the focus is the greenhouse gas element, and so it is Parametrics Show. So I'm handing it over to Beth, who's going to be providing more detail. Thanks, Beth. All right, should I share my screen? Is that how this works?
If you wish to, sure.
Okay, let me show you. Should you? All right, looks like I've got my presentation up.
And we can see it.
Awesome, all right. All right, thank you so much for having me here to talk to you today. My name is Beth Miller. I work for Parametrics, as mentioned. And I spent a good part of my summer completing your greenhouse gas inventory. And this is, all right, so this is a part of the, so I'm going to sort of present the results and then leave the lion's share of my time for, to take questions. It doesn't seem like this is a good format for instantaneous questions, but I'm excited to hear what you have to say and answer any questions you have. Okay, so this is a part of, of the climate element, which is required as, as a part of the comprehensive planning update. So there's two sub-elements, the GHG emissions reduction and the resilience sub-element. Today, we're going to be talking about GHG reductions. And so just to give you an idea of where we are in this process, we've got, we're right here at the beginning with having completed a GHG inventory. And then we're going to move on next to figure out what, what to do about those emissions and plan for the necessary GHG reductions. So I just want to start by talking about what even is a greenhouse gas inventory. It's basically an accounting of all the greenhouse gases emitted or removed from the atmosphere during a specified period. In this case, 2022, for a specific location or organization. And here, we're talking about the geographical boundary of the City of Anacortes. So greenhouse gases are in large part from the combustion of fossil fuels, but there's also some other gases that we take into account in this process. So mostly, we're going to be talking about carbon dioxide, but methane, nitro, methane, which is natural gas and often a product of anaerobic decomposition, so like in wastewater, things like that. Nitrous oxide also comes from things like wastewater and fertilizer. And then there's a lot of other, like very potent greenhouse gases that, that are used in industrial processes and in refrigeration type of things. So those are all basically included and added up. And the idea here is to provide a baseline so you know where, where you started so that you can actually track your progress through time. The goal is not to, not to name and shame any large emitters or, or, you know, like really, it's really a tool to track progress. Okay? And so included in this inventory are, within this inventory, we've got all the activities within the calendar year of 2022, the activities within the geographic boundary, and also some activities that take place sort of across the boundaries. So that includes a lot of the stationary fuel combustion. So that would be natural gas burned to heat your home, any kind of transportation that happens within, within the city boundary, also transportation that happens across the city boundary, all the electricity that happened, that is provided to turn on the lights and heat the buildings. And then there's also the sort of waste and waste disposal that happens outside of the city boundary. So all these different kinds of things, including ferries and marinas and the urban forest. But it excludes the refineries that are on the peninsula. So just to be clear about what's in and what's out. But I'll go through like each type of thing in a second. And you'll hear me say metric tons of CO2E a lot in this presentation. And so I just want to be clear about what I'm talking about. One metric ton is, is sort of a unit of mass. And CO2E means carbon dioxide equivalent. So I listed out all those different gases that could be included. They all have different atmospheric effects. So we sort of normalize to the effect of CO2. And so we, we compare everything using that metric of CO2 equivalent. One metric ton of CO2 is roughly the size of a house. And it's equivalent to a passenger vehicle being driven for 2,500 miles, 13% of your home energy use, 46 barbecue propane cylinders, or 1.2 acres of forest. Just to give you an idea of scale there, it can be, you know, it's hard to imagine how much gas is involved. So overall, the City of Anacortes emitted nearly 500,000 metric tons of CO2E. This is both sort of the local emissions, that's your electricity, your transportation, all of that stuff that just happens locally. And then there's the imported emissions, which are all the things that make emissions on your behalf. So all the emissions associated with farming your food and building the stuff that you buy and producing the fuel that you burn and, and all of your air travel as well. So it's, it comes out to about half and half how much each one is accounting for. All right? So, and just to kind of put this in context of what this looks like compared to the rest of the state. So this is talking about just those local emissions, just what's, you know, heating your buildings and in your, in your gas tanks, that kind of stuff. Per capita, Anacortes releases about 13.7 metric tons per person compared to the state of Washington, which is average, which is about 13.5. So it's slightly higher than the state as a whole. And if we look sort of deeper into where those, that, those differences come from, it's quite a bit higher than the state as a whole in terms of emissions from residential buildings, but a little bit lower in terms of total transportation and passenger car emissions. All right, so then, just to give another way to look at the whole, the whole of those local emissions, broken down by where they come from, about 61% of the total emissions come from the buildings. That just comes from heating the home again. Natural gas and electricity is almost entirely what that is. So, and residential buildings take up the largest portion of that. About 36% comes from transportation, and that includes things like passenger cars, but also your waterborne transportation, including recreational marine and ferries. And then there's also all those freight and commercial, the diesel trucks, the big trucks, off-road vehicles, and a little bit for your transit system and also the, the local airport. And finally, about 3% goes to, to sort of the smaller categories, refrigerant usage, and then solid waste and wastewater. Right, now I'm going to get into the, the, each, go through each sector and sort of tell you where that data came from and give you a little bit more detail about what that means. So building energy, 61% of the total, includes any things like lights, heating and cooling appliances. This is pretty much everything that goes on in your house except for any refrigerator leakage, which would be refrigeration. So we've got electricity. Our electricity data comes from Puget Sound Energy. We emailed them and asked them how much electricity they sold in Anacortes in these, in residential, commercial, or industrial customers. And so they just, they just tell us that, and so then we know how much electricity happened. People wonder about solar. So if you've got solar on your roof, that decreases your electricity bill. So that just sort of is electricity that didn't get bought. And if you buy REX, renewable energy certificates, those get subtracted from the total. So that does make a difference in your electricity footprint. And any electricity used to charge EVs is actually included in the transportation category and not in this category. Natural gas is the other big one in building energy. And that is just, again, we just call Cascade Natural Gas and ask, how much natural gas did you sell? And then for, there's also a little bit of propane, a little bit of diesel, and these usages are harder to track on an individual basis. So we use state average usage and then, and then prorate by Anacortes population. And as you can see, so this is broken down by residential, commercial, and industrial usage. And then the different colors indicate electricity, natural gas, or other. And market-based electricity just means that we're, we're talking about electricity specifically from Puget Sound Energy, which is your utility here. And, and I just have here, just to note that Anacortes's electricity is relatively high because Puget Sound Energy has a relatively high emissions factor compared to the rest of, the rest of the local grid, the Northwest Power Pool grid. So mostly electricity, a lot of natural gas, too. Okay, so transportation energy is about 36%. This includes passenger cars, freight, waterborne navigation, and, and local airplanes, like from the local airport. And so to get the data for passenger cars, we used the vehicle miles traveled estimates from Skagit County. And then we, we could get the passenger car population from vehicle registration records. So it tells us how many are EVs and how many are diesel and how many are gasoline. And then we can, then use that to estimate the emissions that come from those miles traveled in Anacortes. There's also waterborne navigation, and we get that from fuel data. We just call up the port and said, how much fuel did you spend? Did you use, same thing with the marinas and the airports. And then finally, any off-road fuel usage? This is stuff like lawn mowers or construction equipment or ATVs. These are all estimated from sort of a statewide, a statewide survey. And so then we just estimated that proportionally based on Anacortes's population. And I just have this little thing in here because ferries are a big question. Like, how can you even count ferries? Because they leave, you know, they're hardly even in town at all. The Global Protocol for Cities, which is the protocol that we are following in accordance with state guidelines, asks you to include half of all domestic ferry emissions. So in this case, what we did was we took all of the fuel sales from, from the Port of Anacortes, and we estimated emissions based on half of those. And because Port of Anacortes is the main fueling location for the ferries. Yeah, so this is kind of, it's kind of a nice method, even though it's not totally perfect because the, the routes are sort of weird and the boats go everywhere. But it has the advantage of being very reproducible. You can call up the port and ask them again next year, how many gallons of diesel they sold, and you can very accurately track progress. Okay, so this is the breakdown of your transportation emissions. 32% is passenger cars. And, and a pretty large proportion is from that waterborne navigation. The picture, you know, the, the picture of the city, right? That classic picture of the city is all the boats. So it's just a big part of the, of the mix there. And a smaller amount is from the freight and commercial traffic that comes through, and, and then some off-road traffic and on-road transit. Right? And then, so the next section is waste and refrigerants. And these are just smaller pieces of your overall emissions. So it includes all your community refrigerant use. It includes all of your landfill waste, and it includes your water treatment process emissions. So refrigerants, again, air conditioners, your car AC, refrigerators, any kind of industrial cooling that happens. And this is downscaled from data, from, from statewide data from the EPA. So we use sort of a per capita downscaling for that. For solid waste, we actually call up, we, we figure out how many tons of garbage was collected in the city. And that's taken to Roosevelt Landfills. And we can sort of then prorate Roosevelt Landfills emissions for the city based on the amount of solid waste. And then wastewater, we estimated using the EPA's Community Inventory Tool, which, which uses sort of population data and, and waste treatment process data to come up with nitrous oxide and methane emissions. Now, for some kind of lovely news, I was so excited to see this when I was doing this inventory. Your large and beautiful urban forest actually sequesters almost 5% of your carbon emissions. So to get this data, we use a sort of satellite-based imaging system that basically estimates tree loss versus tree growth through time. It's called Global Forest Watch. And then they, they use that change in tree canopy to estimate- And then they, they use that change in tree canopy to estimate carbon emissions or sequestration over a twenty-year period, and then you just take a yearly average for that. And so, this covers the entire city, not just, not just the forest. So, there's some trees lost, but mostly lots of trees growing. And then, the last portion of the inventory is, is the imported emissions. So, these are all the emissions associated with all the things that you buy, basically. And so, the food and the goods and the air travel are all based on, on your income distribution, like the number of households with different income levels based on census data. And then we use the Berkeley Cool Climate Calculator to estimate the resulting emissions per household in each of those, in each of those income categories. And then the fuel production is just based on your usage of fuel, electricity, natural gas, gasoline, and diesel. And that's based on statewide and national fuel production emissions, emissions averages. And then, so the sort of last part of this inventory is to look and say, "Okay, there's so much legislation going on, both at the state and the national level. What kind of effect is that going to have on Anacortes' emissions?" So, here, we're calling this the unchecked emissions versus existing policy forecast. So, the, the red line that sort of goes up is what would it be if the population just increased as projected and nobody did anything about emissions? And then, all the different colors of lines represent different sources of emissions and how they decline, or I suppose they could grow through time. So, you'll see that a lot of these really have dramatic decreases. The ferries have a dramatic decrease because WashDOT has committed to ninety-five percent reduction. A lot of the fuels, the diesel and the other transportation fuels have required percentage reduction in their carbon intensity. There's the, the laws around EVs, which are going to ultimately eliminate those passenger car emissions. A really big one is the rules about electricity emissions going to zero by 2040. And then, a lot of work around the Clean Buildings Act that require increases in the efficiency of buildings. And then finally, there's a little bit, it's sort of hard to see because the refrigerants are such a small portion of the, of the total there, but State of Washington's HFC rules phase out those high GWP chemicals. So, you see that, like, little orange wedge at the very bottom corner actually goes away through time, which is fantastic. And so, I'm not sure, should I pause here for questions, or, or should we? I just have a couple more slides.
Yeah, you can, yeah, a couple more slides. I'm sure you'll get questions.
I'm sure I will, too. Alright. Alright, so the next steps in this process are really to think about, okay, what are we going to do now that we know what the emissions are and we know what else is happening to reduce them? Where can the city of Anacortes act? So, here, the next step is this analysis assessment where we identify emissions reduction targets. And so, you know, looking at this forecast, you, I mean, it's pretty clear where the action needs to happen. We'll want to make sure that we are looking at reducing building energy and increasing efficiency. We need to look at reducing diesel emissions. That's things like, well, first, the, the building energy decreases are things like the new technology around electric heat pumps coming in and being much more efficient. The reducing diesel emissions, there's a lot of movement on the, on the renewable diesel front, so I think that's another place where the city can really act. And then, a lot of, a lot of what the city can do has to do with supporting all of the other actors in, in the changes that need to come. So, things like supporting the, the ports in the ferry decarbonization efforts, supporting the transition to electric vehicles, and helping to support the electricity transition to net-zero electricity. And with that, I am happy to take all the questions that you have.
Okay, yeah, we'll start with the questions, probably from council, but I, sorry, I just have one quick question, and maybe you don't have, I don't, not sure if you have the answer. Obviously, building energy is a big part at sixty-one percent, but was there a year-to-year, like, PSE and Cascade consumption? Since you called and asked, did you ask for more than one year?
We did not.
Based on our population going up about a one-point-two percent? Is our energy consumption for Cascade and, and, and PSE going up at the same rate, or is it different? So, I guess the answer is no, you didn't, we only have one year.
The answer is no. Just one year, although I would...
For a base, for a baseline, is what I was...
Yes, exactly.
Okay, I'm sure council, Mr. Walter, sorry, I think you were about to ask for, Mr. Walters?
Yes, a couple of questions on this slide, just so that I fully understand it. The orange line at the top is your unchecked emissions with population growth, and then the bars that are lower are all the policies that are externally forced. They're not our policies, they're state and federal policies, and their effect on emissions, are those also indexed to population growth?
Yeah, yeah, so everything's overlaid on that population. So, we assume, like, population will grow and, and all of the usage will go up as a result, and then, then there's the, the decrease in population, there's, then there's the decrease in emissions associated with electricity, for example.
And, and the reason I ask is because the, the blue bar, the lighter blue bar, natural gas and propane, is very steady. It appears to experience no decrease, but also no increase.
Yeah, so there's, there's a little bit of change around the edges of that one, having to do with some of the clean fuels and also the building energy, the building energy standards. So, I think it goes up a tiny bit, but not as much as population.
Is all of that, I mean, the standard should lead to a decrease, so is all of the steady-state nature of that bar related to population growth?
The standard leads to some decrease, especially in new buildings, but decreasing in old buildings is very hard, and that's what, right, I mean, the buildings that are now are the ones that are creating those emissions now, so most of your buildings are going to be already existing buildings.
Okay. On an earlier slide, you had some information about carbon sequestration in our forestlands. Will that, what's the current science say? Will that increase or decrease as those forests mature?
There is still some controversy as to exactly, so, different tree species either sort of level off in their carbon sequestration, or some of them, especially in the Pacific Northwest, which is where we are, sort of continue to increase through time. So, I am not totally sure of what the composition of that forest is. I would take your word for whatever it is. It's likely that that will continue to go up through time if the climate continues to support their growth. So, if, if nothing changed, and, you know, nothing bad happened to the forest, I, that sequestration would continue to increase through time.
And will it increase more quickly or increase more slowly?
Is it an accelerating increase or a decelerate, or does it plateau? You know what? There's, I mean, that, that, the shape of that curve is, is different for each tree species, so I am not totally sure. I, I don't feel comfortable saying if it's like an increasing increase or a, or a decreasing increase.
And then, in the alternative, what would be the effect if those trees were to burn?
Oh, yeah, that, I mean, so that's sort of like a, a double win, right? You lose both some carbon from the trees themselves burning, and then you also lose sequestration potential from the, from, if the trees are killed by that.
That kind of goes to the question of, do younger trees sequester more or older trees sequester more, and, and what that curve looks like? If you have any of that reference information anywhere, it'd be really useful, I think.
Sure. In general, in the Pacific Northwest, trees don't reach their big sequestration potential from, from many, many decades. So, like, a seedling is much less effective at sequestering as, than, say, a twenty or even a hundred-year-old tree. So, in general, very new trees are not nearly as effective as very old trees at, at sequestering carbon, but like I said, the shape of that curve in between them varies from species to species.
And one, just one other point, Ms. Moulton, if she were here, I'm sure would point out that our trash used to go to Roosevelt landfill, but I think as of this year, it now goes to Oregon? I think that's right?
Ooh, which one does it go to? Do you know?
Uh, no, no. But I, I bet we could find out. There, there has been a recent change.
Okay, that's, that is interesting to know, and that also will, definitely, the characteristics and the location of that landfill will have a big effect on the, on the emissions associated with it, but in general, it's such a relatively small proportion of your total emissions that that change in where the landfill is in the future probably won't have a huge effect on your overall footprint.
The transportation method also changed from train to truck.
Hmm, staying, okay, good to know.
I, I know council's going to have more questions, but since you signed up, I always like to honor those who have signed up. Mr. Wilkerson, do you want to come up and make a comment or ask a question? I will definitely come back to council. Just make sure the mic's on.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Miller. Just by way of background, I spent two years of my career with the International Energy Agency Greenhouse Gas Steering Committee, and got a, a, a big lesson in how difficult it is to allocate commissions, emissions to any one location, let alone country, state, county, or city. So, I think part of the challenge in this type of exercise is to isolate the city from all the surrounding areas. As was pointed out, the refineries of, in this exercise are kept as a separate thing, but the, the city, as we all know, wonderful Fidelgo Island is a center for a number of activities, and when I look at the emissions allocated to recreational boating, A, they look very high compared to a study that was done for the port a year or two ago, but I think we have to recognize Anacortes is a gateway, not only to the San Juans, to the Canadian Islands, and to Alaska, because recreational boaters come here and they fuel up to head, head out, so the emissions are actually generated elsewhere. The, and while boats are moored here in our marinas, they're on electric power, so it's, you know, it's a mixed bag, and it's a very difficult thing to properly allocate to locations. The other thing I noticed is that the study done for the port, which was looking at 2021 emissions, it was done under the Puget Sound Maritime Air Forum by Starcrest Consulting, but it allocated to ocean-going vessels double the emissions of recreational vessels, and that's for the big, you know, coke and sulfur loading ships that actually park within city limits. And the recreational vessel number from the port study was significantly lower than in this study, so I think it bears looking and certainly very deep cooperation with the port on how these things are analyzed, because we all, we all resident on Fidelgo Island. So, emission of ocean-going vessels, yea and nay, is, needs looking at. Then the other thing with respect to the sink is, you know, we're blessed with an island that has a lot of forest and tree cover, so we've got a carbon sequestration number applied to the forest, but we're also an island surrounded on all sides by water, and oceans and aquatic life are also a sink for carbon dioxide. And so, is it not reasonable, even though the water isn't in city limits, to allocate a sink that's surrounding us? And, you know, along those lines, involved with managing a marina, the marinas spend billions on shoreline management plans and promoting eel grass, et cetera, et cetera. And that's typically given some what they call blue carbon credits. Again, there's nothing in this study that credits the wonderful environment we live in, which has forest and water. So, just encourage that it be looked at from the lens of Anacortes being on an island, and a lot of commuter traffic of both boats and cars on and off the island. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, council, I'm sure other questions? Ms. Hubig?
Thank you. A lot of the recommendations on that set goals, develop policies slide seem to mirror a lot of the information that's come out of the 2021 State Energy Strategy. Can you think of any place where you may have recommendations that deviate from the State Energy Strategy?
I, I would need a little bit of support in knowing exactly how, what I, what I have written here deviates from the State Energy Strategy. I would say that what is on this is, is quite eye-level, right? So, it'll depend on exactly how things can be implemented in, in Anacortes. I don't know. John or Katie, do you have any opinions on that one?
I don't think we're there yet to under, to kind of look at, specifically at what happens in Anacortes, but Beth is correct. Like, she's taking into account the State Energy Strategy to look at your emissions, but then we have to go down a road of looking at what measures can be implemented within the city of Anacortes that would, I would say, support the State Energy Strategy. I noticed Katie turned her camera, so I'll let her talk.
Thanks, Sean, though, I think you covered it. I wasn't going to add much more than that, to that, but yeah, I think you covered it. We still aren't quite there. We have this, done this work to kind of identify where the elements are coming from, but are really looking forward to collaborating with the CPAT after this presentation and our upcoming meeting. We'll be talking a little bit more about resilience at that meeting, but really, we're looking forward to working with that group to really understand, okay, so this is where the sources are, but how is Anacortes going to sort of tackle this and move this forward? So, that's the, the piece that we're stepping into, or the phase of the project that we're stepping into.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you. I do recognize that this is very high-level, very early on. And then my second question, if I could please, one of the things that the Washington State Transportation Commission has been working on has been a road usage charge, and I know that this is primarily around greenhouse gas emissions, but one of the things that we can't refuse to acknowledge is that motor vehicle fuel taxes do impact the state and the cities and the counties. Will there be any recommendations coming from y'all around a road usage charge, or is this just specifically on emissions?
I'd say that, that has a lot to do with what your CPAT would like to do. I mean, so that sounds like something that, that needs to come from the community and not from me, but what do you say, John?
I, I agree with that, I mean, that's, if it comes up, that's going to go through the private policy advisory team, your planning commission, and you all to make decisions on that. I don't think either, any of us on the call right now would say that would be a recommendation, but we'd have to see what comes up from the community as well, so. But that's a great point, and we'll keep that in the back of our head, and now, now it's on the table, so we'll see where it goes.
Mr. Young? Go ahead, Beth, sorry, or Katie.
I'm sorry, I'll just add, add to that one of the roles that we kind of highlighted with the CPAT is to really hear and make sure... is to really hear and make sure that we are working with the community members and particularly the needs of vulnerable communities or impacted communities. And so that is also a reason why we don't want to sort of forefront and jump in with policy ideas. We need to make sure that those decisions around all the future policies to address this are done equitably and within the eye towards and a lens towards how they impact vulnerable populations, so that we're not increasing those impacts. And that is a part of the HBL 1181 requirement that, that founded this, this new climate element for that piece. And then I'll also just note that Commerce, along with all the guidance supporting this, has released a series of measures to identify what, to end to align kind of what communities can do. And it started out as an Excel spreadsheet, and they've just released an updated tool that's more interactive and a little bit easier to navigate what all those measures are. So we aren't sort of picking things out of the air. We're working along that framework and then refining those to the needs of Xanacortes.
Mr. Young, I do see your hand raised.
Thank you, Ma'am Miller. I'm curious, you know, I, I think that this discussion is just enlightening in so many ways. You know, I think that the conversations we, as a world of people, are confronting is how do we help our climate survive in the way we would like it to and do the things that we need? So I am looking forward to the possibilities of solutions. I think that being laypeople in this process and concerned people, of course, we're always looking for ideas how we can mitigate that. To the gentleman's point, public comment that came a little bit earlier, speaking to the, you know, the ships that are belching, if you would. And I'm curious, why, given the industry that we have here, that we support, the refineries, part of that commerce is not included in this, you know, discussion?
So why aren't the refineries included?
Correct.
Good question. We kind of went around a little bit with it at the beginning, but those refineries are being included in the county inventory. And so they are being included in your region's inventory, just not in, in Xanacortes's inventory.
Was that, if, if I could, and I hear you, I'm, I'm not trying to push, but I'm trying to get a little bit more clarity, is that because the refineries are, I believe, on our systems, I was thinking that that would be part of, you know, the consideration for Xanacortes as a whole of people and as a city. So I didn't know if you could elaborate just a little bit further. I understand that the county would want to do it. But because it's right here, you know, I, I guess I was just trying to get a little bit more as to why, even though the county may include it, we didn't include it in this particular part, or the decision was made that it would be more practical to not. Because I think it would probably definitely affect the numbers and, you know, skew it a little bit differently. Am I right?
You are correct, yes. It would be different, radically different, yeah.
So it was a deliberate point to not include it, though, okay?
Well, I think, I think it was a, and correct me if I'm wrong, Katie or John, if you understand sort of farther back the, the decision-making process in this. But I think technically they are not on Xanacortes's, not within Xanacortes's geographical boundary. So that's one argument for not including them. And, and we don't want to double count them. So if the, if the county is including them, we don't want to include them as well, because then effectively we're, we're counting them twice in the region's inventories.
Oh, okay. I'll go with that. And thank you, Ma'am Miller. Thank you for the, thank you for the interesting information. I appreciate it.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini?
First, I just wanted to ask our planning director, is that right that the refineries are not within the Xanacortes city limits? That's?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
They're, they're in the urban growth area. They're not in the city limits. We serve them water, but we don't serve them sewer.
So is one of the things that we did with the things we put on the docket to ask, are we trying to incorporate some of that, though, into the city? Or no, no, okay, thank you. I was encouraged by the fact that it seemed like the areas where we, as residents, have an opportunity to be lower in our emissions, like our passenger car emissions, our total transportation's emissions, it looks like we're lower than the averages. And then you had pointed out that the residential emissions, they're about twice as high as, as other areas. And you had said that that's because, or part of the reason, is because PSE isn't, I'm not sure if I'm using the right words, isn't great with the way they do their emissions. So it tends to make us, make us higher. Is that, would you say that accounts for the almost like all of the doubling of the residential use? Or are there other areas besides PSE that you see that, that we could be doing better as well?
So one of the, so, so PSE has a relatively high emissions factor compared to the other electrical sources in the state. And that has like a complicated set of reasons. One of the reasons is that the publicly-owned or consumer-owned utilities have more access to the, to the federally-produced hydropower from the Bonneville Power than, is it Bonneville Power or is it? The, the, the hydropower is more available to the consumer-owned electrical utilities. And so the public, the, the investor-owned utilities like, like PSE tend to have much higher emissions factors, because they don't have as much access to that low emissions power. That will change, well, the access to hydro won't necessarily change, but the emissions factor of, of PSE will change through time as, as laws about the emissions, emissions factors of electric utilities come, come online. I, I, that is something I would like to look at, though. The rest, now, now you've made me curious, because I have not compared, for example, Xanacortes's per capita natural gas usage to the state's per capita natural gas usage. So that is another potential place where maybe Xanacortes is, is seeing their higher residential emissions might be from the natural gas usage. Doesn't really matter where that comes from. Natural gas is natural gas, so. So, but I, I don't know. I have not split it up in that way to compare that, but that would be interesting to look at.
Thank you.
So is it fair to say to Mr. Fantini's question that someone like Seattle City Light has more access to hydropower than PSE does? Okay, I see you're nodding your head, yes.
Yes, yes.
Mayor Miller? Mr. McDougall?
I actually had a very similar question to Mr. Fantini's, and, and thank you to the parametrics team and Ms. Miller for your presentation. That, yeah, that 2X factor of our, kind of our residential use, I think you already kind of answered it. You haven't dug into like what percentage of that 2X is natural gas versus what is electricity from PSE? My suspicion is it's a large, a large percentage of that double is actually natural gas and maybe due to larger buildings. But have, have we done any study of that, like how our building sizes compare to state of Washington averages? Are we, are we spending a lot, heating a lot of three-dimensional space?
I have not looked into that for this project, but I would be interested to know if maybe the other parts of this project have looked at that at all?
Ms. Cleveland McGrath, did you wanna, sorry, I'm marking down everybody who's commented. Do you wanna?
Yeah, my question was in line with electricity and trying to understand why PSE was more detrimental, right, had more of an impact. And you, you kind of explained that. I, I'm just curious how we expect electricity to essentially go to zero. Can you explain that graph? I assume we're gonna still be using PSE? Is it that we're gonna go predominantly to solar? What does that look like for the public? That just seems like when we're gonna continue to use cascade, like natural gas and diesel and whatnot at a, at least a reduced rate, but still present, what does that look like for the, for the average consumer?
Yeah, good question. In theory, that legislation is, is pushing entirely on PSE, right? So it's pushing on them to lower the emissions per kilowatt hour of electricity that they sell. So they are, are in charge of figuring out how to lower the emissions from their electricity supply. And they, you can go into, they have all published plans about how they're gonna do this. And it does include a lot of solar. It includes some wind. I have not looked in detail at PSE's plan, but that, they, they have to come up with a plan for how to comply with that legislation. So in theory, Xanacortes could sit back and say, okay, you provide me with, with your clean electricity now. In practice, it will probably require some real energy efficiency measures to happen, some more distributed solar, things like that to sort of support that transition that needs to happen with the utilities.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
And this is a question, probably, it's beyond what we're talking about tonight, but I think it's something that I'm really curious about, to have on our radar, is when we see the expectation that our ferry system is gonna be reduced by 90%, what does that look like? How are we preparing the grid to handle all of, like, the electrical grid for pure electrical cars and ferries that are fully electric? I mean, I feel like that's gonna require a lot of substations, so that's probably not the right term to use. But is the state working on this? Are we telling PSE to do this? What kind of involvement at a city level will we have in that process? Because it seems really important to be doing at the same time.
Fully agreed. And I, I am gonna punt that to someone that understands more about the electrical grid there here.
I, it's a great question. I think the city should, and, and it should be involved in talking to the utility providers about that. One, we want to make this, Katie brought up that equity issue. We want to make this, this transition equitable. But we also want, we also know it's gonna put a higher demand on our electrical grid. To what Beth said, all the utilities, whether it's a publicly-owned utility or an investor-owned utility, they know this is coming. And, and we see from Puget Sound Energy and Seattle City Light and the PUDs, like, they're gearing up. They're saying, where do we need to increase our capacity? What kind of capacity increases do we need? And WashDOT's doing the study about how to make sure there's enough power at all their, their ferry terminal to charge those ferries. So that, I think that's a process that's on, it's started, it's underway. Nice thing is, is the federal governments provide a lot of money to everybody to look at this. So it's an important transition nationally. So that's kind of where we're going. And there's money out there. People are, are using those grants and those low-interest loans from the federal government to kind of take a look at this and say, what do we need to do to, to make this transition happen? And then also, you know, with electric vehicles, where do we need to put those charging stations? Where should they be? You know, where, where, where are those little zones where people need to be able to stop and charge and, and have fast charging or slow charging? So all that's kind of going on right now. From this thing, and it's a comp plan, it's, it's what you as a community want out of this plan, you know, we're here to kind of provide all this information, but there's things there that you, you have mentioned that we can take back and talk to the policy advisory team and think about what kind of measures we can turn into action and turn, then turn into policies and goals within the city. And then come back and say, here's what, what this, what the county's doing as well. And that's what we want to be able to kind of bring to this advisory team right up front, is like, what, what kind of thing should we be looking at? Where does Beth need to dig a little deeper? Great, thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Another question.
So one of, you guys have brought up a couple of times about the fact that we don't want to kind of double count. So, I mean, are you, will you be sharing information with the county's parametric version of parametrics? Or how do, how do, how does the county and each city within the county kind of talk to each other about how they're, what, what information they're using and what they're excluding or including? Is there some kind of, Matt, is that a SCOG question, or is there any plan in place to bring it all together?
I don't currently chair SCOG, so I can't answer that question. But that's probably, probably where it needs to come together, SCAG, Council of Governments. But, but if, if one of our parametrics wants to answer that question, I'd, I'd love to have somebody.
I will say we do ask our counterparts what they're doing. It's that simple. You know, we, we, we have some professional relationships that we know folks. If we have a question like this, you know, are you including this? Are you not including this? What, how are you doing ferries? What should we do about the ferries? We can ask those questions. I think everybody's, it's just, you know, like, this is new, so everybody's trying to figure out how to do it and do it in a, a way that provides great information so you can make good decisions.
Yeah, I'll certainly ask the question the next SCOG meeting. Are you including the, did you expect us to include the refineries, or are you including the refineries as an example? A pretty straightforward question. Before, everybody on council's had a chance to talk, I just want to make sure any member of the public has an opportunity to ask some questions here. Okay, all right, council, more questions for the team?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. McDougall?
Would you mind advancing one slide? I think it was to the last one that had the, yes, the recommendations, thank you. The support ferry decarbonization, the ferry purple number obviously is going down. But there's, basically, the two metrics that are not going down, given sort of like built-in policy, are diesel and natural gas. And is that diesel number, that, that does not include ferries, right? That's just trucking and other consumers of diesel?
Right, yeah. So it's, it's the, it's the other marinas, not the, not the ferries, and also the trucking, also off, off-road diesel usage. So all of those kinds of things.
Okay, so from a local policy perspective, we may not have much influence on that other than kind of supporting the, the bullet points on the right. On the natural gas, that's primarily like home heating, I assume. And so theoretically, a, a local policy measure could be like some incentive to install electric heat pumps and the like, which would then take advantage of the electricity going to zero, thus taking that natural gas number down as well, getting us closer to the overall goal, right?
Absolutely, yeah. So it's stuff like that. So it's both home heating, and that is the lion's share. Home heating, water heating is another big chunk of that. And then also sort of commercial kitchens is another one, but that's, that's a little bit harder. That's more difficult to deal with, so the easy ones are heat pumps.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I would like to reiterate, I would, I would also be interested in knowing how much of that double residential emissions is from the PSE grid mix versus other causes? And if there are other causes, having more data on what, why are numbers higher than the average? Or just the, what makes up, you know, our residential emission number would be very useful in trying to formulate policy. Couple of other unrelated questions. Did you include the Gwimis ferry as well as the San Juan ferry in your ferries data?
Yes.
Okay. I note here you've got support ferry decarbonization as one of our policy goals. I tend to think that that, along with others, including like the, the road usage charge question, are very much state policies and not local policies. And since with only one exception, most of us up here don't make state policy, I tend to think that us debating that locally won't be as productive as us focusing on what we do have control over. But so, for example, you've got support EV transition on the slide. And assumedly, you changed electric vehicles and your emissions then moved to a different category, right? Now they're in electricity instead of in gasoline consumption. But what about reducing vehicle miles traveled? How, how much of that, 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 whatever we're calling it, the passenger car category here? How much of the passenger car category is generated by what kind of trips go into vehicle mile, vehicle miles traveled categories? Because if we can reduce some demand for VMTs, we can assumedly have more of an impact than anything having to do with electric vehicles. Because we, we can't, we can't really incentiv, at the local level, we can't really incentivize electric vehicles, is my sense. There are some things we can do around the edges, and we should do those things. some things we can do around the edges, and we should do those things. But my sense is the big local lever is VMTs. So, do we have more data on why those trips occur?
I don't have that data, but that is, would be, I mean, the Skagit Council of Government VMT report that we had, so we've got that. Katie, you took off, do you have a, do you have some data on that?
I just wanted to note that we are not the consultants that are involved in the transportation element, but there is a lot of focus on VMT in this latest, as a, as a result of HB 1181, which is the same bill that required the climate element updated as part of the GMT. So, we are not the consultants involved with that, we are coordinating with those consultants and, and staff involved in that. So, I think we, in the similar response to earlier questions, aren't, we wanted to present the analysis today, but really want to work and utilize the local knowledge of the CPAT to really, before we're kind of jumping into policy questions, where we want to go, because there's a lot of value in that group and want to make sure that we're understanding impacts to vulnerable populations. But there is some engagement going on with staff that are, were involved in transportation. So, I think that there's definitely a resonant between those two themes and some opportunities there, and there's a lot of great existing policies that you had even in the 2016 comprehensive plan that we're updating that speak to, you know, making more investments in non-motorized transportation. So, there's a lot of resonance there. So, but I think there's some overlap, so I don't want to speak for the work that we're not involved in.
And I just wanted to note one more thing about EVs and VMT. As cars transition to EVs, as they are required to do by 2035, VMT and, and greenhouse gas emissions become increasingly decoupled. There are lots of really good reasons to decrease VMT, including like cars hit and kill people all the time, they take up a lot of space, like all, all sorts of reasons. But the, the greenhouse gas argument to do with VMT is, is sort of decreasing. And, and there are definitely places where a city can step in to support the EV transition and, and make quite a bit of a difference, especially when it comes to charging infrastructure, especially in places where it's hard to charge, like multifamily places where you can really have a real impact in the, in the adoption of EVs based on strategic placing of chargers.
Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mayor Miller. You know, it's so interesting about, you know, as we look forward and try to figure out how we as a society are able to move forward. I do think, though, that this discussion, the goal is to propel us toward being better about the emissions, how do we mitigate it, how do we help move forward. But I do also think that some of the issues that we're facing, meaning, again, let's say the ships that are belching out in the bay and in the sound, is impactful, not only for the region, you know, but part of the reason that we have the industry that we do is that that's part of the cost of being in business. Now, can we mitigate that? Is that the goal of coming out with new inventions, new thoughts, new ways, you know, to sort of begin to positively change what we're already dealing with to look toward the future? But I think it's also important, when we look at the data and the information that will come out of it, that we also have those pieces that we may not want to include in it, but it's directly impacting where we live, who we are, and what we're doing. And the only reason I'm bringing that up is that we do have, you know, a wonderful place to live, and we're, everybody's fighting for industry, job growth, quality of life, environmentally friendly. And, you know, sometimes those things are not harmonious at the same time. But does it create the thinking toward how do we get better at it? It's what all of this is about, and I get that. But as we truly begin to look at where we are, what we're doing, and how we're going to get there, I still think it's incredibly important that we holistically look at those things that are affecting our area. And so, I would be wonderfully looking forward to seeing the county's report and what they have to say about the industry here, and also to see if it includes those diesel ships that are out and, you know, working hard to bring in crude and take it out to feed the country's energy needs. But that impact on carbon is really what we have to look at and be honest with ourselves about its impact. And then, in being honest with ourselves, it will allow us to begin to think of ways we can mitigate it and change that. Would you agree with that?
Yes, I, I mean, I definitely would. And I have to say that when we work with other communities that have high greenhouse gas emitting industries, you know, it, it can be a little bit like, ooh, like, I don't want to take, you know, all of Intel's weird GHG emissions are like super high, but, but, hey, they're in a community that cares. They could go to someplace that didn't care at all. And so, here we, we have an opportunity to work together.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Frantini?
Just a question, because I don't think I got a definitive answer, at least if there, I didn't hear it. When we're talking about the county is going to count this, so we're not going to count this, is there a chance that the county just says, we're not going to count this? And then, because, and then would we have a chance to count it at that point? Because I feel like I'm not getting a, a 100% sure that somebody's going to count this. That's my first question. Can they come back and say no?
I was assured that the county was going to count this, but not by the county in person. So...
Again, I, I'm happy to follow up with that one. I'm pretty, the county is also working on their comprehensive plan, they're also operating under the same state mandates to work on the climate element of the comprehensive plan. So, yeah, I'm pretty confident we have a good enough relationship with the county that we'll work that out.
Thank you.
Whether, whether or not the consultants are, are working together or not.
Okay, and then my second question was, and this is more of a process question, I'm encouraged by how much that we are talking about, you know, this is going to go to the, the CPAT team, which is our, made up of our local folks that know our area well, and kind of will touch on a lot of these, a lot of these things. So, just so I understand, this information that we are going to take is then going to go to the CPAT team, who's going to kind of refine it, formulate a plan that will then come back to council, and then we'll have an opportunity to include that in the comprehensive plan? Is that kind of how the process works?
Generally, yeah. And Beth, the slide Beth had in the beginning kind of outlined that piece, that we're going to be meeting with the CPAT over the, between now and kind of early next year, to review the analysis, share the findings, make sure that we, particularly for the resilience element. So, I just want to remind folks that this is one, this piece that we're covering tonight is one half of the climate element, there's also sort of the resilience. So, what are the impacts that Anacortes community is going to see, and what are the vulnerabilities that it has, and how can we plan to reduce those vulnerabilities? So, there's a lot to tackle here. So, over the next several months, we'll be meeting with the CPAT, we will be working on the analysis to share information and identifying kind of focus areas and goals, and then working with the CPAT to refine those. And then the current plan, or the current schedule has us coming back to Planning Commission early next year to share findings, and then not, then on to council adoption later in the year. I'll leave the specific states for John Coleman to speak to explicitly there, but that is the idea. And so, the, and one piece that's really important to note here is that the climate element is a new element, but it is going to touch a lot of the other elements. And so, that's why we've also identified, and we've already met with staff once, and we're going to be meeting with staff a few times during this process, they've, some of them are going to be sitting in CPAT meetings as well. So, because there are recommendations that are coming out of the climate element are often recommendations that are going to need to be land also in some of the other elements or be supported in those elements, such as transportation. So, there's a lot of integration that we need to get to, to get to this last kind of integrated comprehensive plan, and that will be closer to that kind of early next year. So, we have the findings from the climate elements, the recommendations that we want to carry forward, and then we need to figure out how, and demonstrate how that's being integrated into the plan overall, so that you don't have the risk of competing priorities between elements and having to navigate that once the plan is adopted. So, that is the goal there, is to make sure that we've done that integration work through this process.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for this presentation, and yay for the forest lands.
Okay. All right, one more time for any member of the public. Okay, yep, come on up.
Well, thank you very much for the great presentation and the information, and just have a question. Looking at the charts, you have goals, policies, and from 2022, I, it's just, I couldn't see all the details in the back, yes. Can we also have the plot going backwards, for instance, 20, 30 years? And I'll be very interested in learning the emission on a per capita basis, you know, in our area, our region, looking at any changes over time, and how much room really, you know, we can reduce, or, you know, not really able to push in certain categories as much as demonstrated here. It's thinking about 1990s and early 2000s, lots of manufacturing businesses, many of my customers moved offshore. However, the imports really exploded. So, you're offset by the diesel, by the ferry, by the other transportation to ship the products across the map in North America. And so, that will be really interest, very interesting to see, going back the history, and let's look at the carbon dioxide. And the second question is, maybe I'm just ignorant, and thinking about gas from higher concentration going to the lower concentration, and so, if certain area, for instance, if Mount Vernon has a higher CO2, wouldn't be leveled out with Anacortes with, like the gentleman just said, it should be regional? And lastly, how do we account for the forest fire export? You know, it's almost, almost like a clockwork in BC, Western BC, the forest fire, and how that accounted for? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Those were good questions, and I would say, you are right, that, that all of these carbon emissions, all the, the smoke from the fires, the, the CO2 from the refineries, that is global, right? It's not just regional, it's global. And so, the point of this is not to understand what the concentration is above Anacortes, but rather to understand Anacortes' contribution to the concentration. And then, with, with respect to how emissions have gone in the past, we didn't, we don't have past emissions data. One could dig it up, probably, but it's, doing one of these kinds of inventories is, is a reasonably large amount of work. So, probably, and as the, as the legislation requires, we'll continue doing it in the future. If you are interested in looking at what has happened in the past, there are state level inventories and that go back decades that, that are super interesting to look at, how the emissions profile has changed through time, like where has, where has gotten worse, where has gotten better.
All right, Mr. Walters?
I agree, it would be difficult to project backward, and that's not really the point here. But we did do a climate action plan, the city of Anacortes did, in 2006, so that should have some Anacortes-specific data, and I think the state-level data that Ms. Miller mentions would be good enough for these purposes. And also, just to assuage some concerns, I was lead on the county's climate action plan and inventory that we did in 2010, and we counted the refineries then. So, I expect that they will continue to.
All right. All right, well, I think that's...
Mayor Miller?
Oh, oh, Mr. Coleman, yeah.
So, we have confirmed with, with the counties, the consultants that did the counties, which is Cascadia, and they have, they are including the refineries, including several other industrial facilities in the county.
Okay, thanks. A good conversation, a start of a much longer conversation. Okay, thank you for that, and thank you for the presentation to Makers and the Parametrics team. All right, so we're on to item 6B. This is a contract approval, joint use agreement for facilities with the Anacortes School District. It's a discussion item with possible action, and Mr. Lunsford?
Thank you, Mayor, council. I need them to stop sharing.
Uh-oh. I wonder if we can have the ability to, there we go.
There we go. Excellent, thank you. So, tonight we're talking about a joint use agreement with the Anacortes School District. We've had several joint use agreements with the district, and this is a newer iteration with some changes to it. So, the city depends on the district for gyms and classrooms, for parks and recreation, for our youth sport leagues, family drop-in athletics, art classes, and our camps. And starting in 2020, excuse me, 2025, the district is requesting a fee to help cover custodial and utility costs. So, back in about 2009 or '10, we had been using, heretofore, to that point, we had been using facilities, sharing them freely, but around the time of the Great Recession, the district came to us when they had financial troubles, and they asked if they could charge us a fee, and we agreed to that. So, at that time, it was $7,000, no, $4,000 a quarter, $16,000 a year, and that lasted until 2016. So, until that time, we had been sharing and not paying, and then for about six years, we paid them a fee, and then from 2016 till present, we had shared again, but not paid a fee. And due to their financial troubles at this time, they have come to us and asked us for a $28,000 per year fee that would come out of our recreation budget that we could slightly alter with some of our fees. Our goal is not to charge families more, we do increase our fees a little bit each year, and we feel that we could come close to balancing this out. But nonetheless, we have a great need for their facilities, they've provided us those. We have no gyms other than the one below us that really can't serve the leagues and camps, and we don't have classrooms and facilities, so we're dependent upon the schools. They also use our facilities, which we're glad to provide to them. Most of those are at what's known as Smiley's Bottom or Volunteer Park, which is school land. So, we have developed them as parks, we can have another interlocal with them on that. So, our desire is to ask you to support this change and to allow us to continue to use their facilities. We can ameliorate some of the costs through slight fee raises that we would normally do anyhow, and then as they regain their financial footing as they have in the past, then we'd ask to renegotiate this, to bring them down to zero, because it's the, you know, our users are their users, our tax bases are their students, et cetera. So, it's a joint sharing, and we understand their needs now and support this request, because it allows us to have them do the custodial work utilities that they would, those costs they would incur anyhow, and provide our use with the ability to use their gym space and classrooms after hours. Any questions?
All right, council, questions for Mr. Lunsford?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Thank you. Mr. Lunsford, I think you're indicating that this is just a temporary work together, just because of the nature of finances, and, and that, you know, going forward, this won't become, isn't necessarily permanent. This is just allowing us to be able to, one hand helping the other one, because we work together, and the very people we're serving is the community as a whole. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Young, that's, thank you for that question. Yes, that's our experience in the past with the school. As they regain their financial footing, as they're able to accommodate their budget, then we would be able to go back to them and say, okay, now that you've, you've, you've had this change occur, we'd like to renegotiate... that you've 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 had this change occur, we'd like to renegotiate this lease. That's what happened in 2016 with my predecessor, Mr. Robinson and Dr. Wenzel. Thank you, Mayor.
And one one further question. And so there are things we do to just help the school district without charging right now. We and so just simply because of the nature of what's taken place that that's why we're making this request. And you believe that you can mostly accommodate this expenditure from the resources that you have available to you?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
So the $28,000, I think I heard you say, is pretty much just to cover kind of like the custodial and janitorial needs that they have.
And utilities, correct.
And utilities. Okay. And then it looks like, like you said, that there's a term in here, and it renews each calendar year on the first of April. And with 30 days written notice, like, should the school district magically find millions of dollars, we could renegotiate that with 30 days written notice?
Correct. I think that and that's what's happened in the past. When they regain their financial footing, we've gone to them and said, hey, okay, now that you're 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 whole again, can we talk about this lease and and change this fee? Correct? That'd be our intention.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleo McGrath.
Not to get into the weeds, but are we, is it your expectation that then user fees, so signing up for one of the sports or a different activity through Anacortes Parks and Rec, will you expect to pass that cost on to participants? Or is it just going to be coming out of your bottom line? Have you given that any thought?
Sure. Thank you. That's a great question. So we've given that some thought, myself and Mr. South, the Recreation Manager. We do update our fees periodically. We try to keep them low, especially if a family has more than one child in our program, so that no one is left out. We also have the great resource of the Anacortes Parks Foundation. So if a family can't make it, even though our fees are lower, they will provide scholarships. People just have to fill out a form and make their request. So we think with those two mechanisms, we can keep the costs norm. We do have fees that go up because of our software programming fees go up annually. So we try to raise them accordingly to meet other costs. So we would look at potential slight increases across the board and then work with the Parks Foundation to help families that couldn't make it. And in some of these, as Mr. Fantini said, we would have to eat some of those costs because we don't want to fully burden the taxpayer with that change.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
What are the facilities that we are providing to the school district?
Thank you, Mr. Walters. So we, at Smiley's Bottom or Volunteer Park, we have the baseball fields there, the fast pitch field, baseball field, and we provide those to the school district for their use for their athletic facilities, for their fast pitch, their baseball, sometimes even for football for practices, free of charge. And we get the game the fields ready and take care of things for them free of charge. And that's part of the interlocal agreement that we have with the district, particular to that location.
And because that's their real property, but our facility.
Exactly right.
Do we think that that all nets out? Because we don't have any transfer from the school district to us to cover that. We think the 28,000 is the net that we owe to them, given what they receive from us.
I think in the spirit of cooperation that has developed over decades with the district, our ability to use, you know, so we also use the Smiley Bottom, Smiley's Bottom fields across the ditch where that's not, that's school district land for our leagues without cost. We've been able to use Rice Field previously without cost. So there's there's an interchange. We were able to develop those roughly 14 acres at Smiley's Bottom that's now Volunteer Park, just with the for the cost of doing it without an additional lease fee from the district for additional use and traffic. So that's a benefit to the community for fields that the district does not use. So they've not tried to charge us to pass it on to the consumer. And we've not we've tried to do the same so that because so that people of the community can afford and participate as much as possible. This has come up because of specific costs that they have to janitorial and utilities. So we're trying to address that specific need. And where we can to continue to cooperate, provide things to one another free of charge, so that that doesn't get passed on to the community.
Okay. So I think I follow that. But basically, those without trying to do a lot of math, we perceive that those netted out to zero.
Yeah. And even the the city's getting a very good deal at Volunteer Park because of the work that we do there on many fields that the school district has not up their lease on for us in the past. And so we think that it's it's a it's a good trade with one another for those facility usages.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Miller. Mr. McDougall.
I've actually, I'm a big supporter of this. I've for years participated in the walk-in volleyball at Fidalgo Elementary, which is twice a week, and it's like until 9:00 PM at night. So lights are on, you know, bathrooms are open and being used. I've also coached in some Parks and Rec leagues that take place like in, you know, the middle school gym and things like that. So like, we we get a lot of access to gym space, and it's really valuable. So unless there are any further questions, I move that counsel authorize the mayor to execute the joint use agreement 24-241-PRK-001 between the City of Anacortes and Anacortes School District.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McDougall and a second by Ms. Hubick to approve the contract as presented. Additional discussion. Mr. Franciag, vote please.
Ms. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleo McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is last item on the agenda, 6C. This is a memorandum of agreement with the Anacortes Public Library Foundation. Mr. Vogel.
Good evening, council members, members of the audience. I'm Jeff Vogel, the library director. Library is really excited to bring this MOA before you tonight. This has been long in the making. This is for the teen area renovation. It came out of our last strategic plan and then got waylaid by COVID, like lots of things. And then the current Anacortes Library Foundation has taken it back up. They paid to have the plans, the existing plans finished out, architecturally designed, engineered, and permitted. So they're all ready to go. We have an invitation to bid that's all ready to go, thanks to Tiffany and Darcy, the contracts department. So that's all ready to go. So this is sort of the last step. So this is the memorandum of agreement between Anacortes Library Foundation and the City of Anacortes to fund the teen area up to 290,000. The foundation also paid for a cost estimate, which came in about 185,000. So they've built in a cushion here, and I think it's a good one. I hope that bids don't come in too much higher than that. So super exciting. This is going to be a teen space that's collaborative. It's going to be an enclosed space. It's going to have a maker space, meeting room area that can be sectioned off with what's called a nano wall. We're going to, we already have furniture. Our teen librarian, Anna Farnsworth, has already got grant money, and we have incredible furniture that'll fit in the space. And then once we get it built, we're going to write grants to put technology in the space as well. So this has been long in the making, and I hope you all will move this forward.
All right. Well, before I get questions, I just once again, an opportunity to thank the foundation for, you know, raising these funds and and making them available for things that we just don't have the money in the general fund to do. So again, appreciate that.
Absolutely. They've been really, really supportive, so.
So with that, counsel, questions? Mr. Vogel.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I'm very excited about this. Sitting in on the committee meetings, talked about this for a while. I think it's kind of a no brainer. The foundation, who people are very passionate about the library, have raised this money. They're simply asking us to front it, and then they'll they'll reimburse us. I also appreciate the fact that there's an opportunity if for some reason it comes in way higher than expected, that we're not necessarily have to have to do this. There'll be an opportunity to back out, although I think it looks pretty optimistic going forward. Also, as somebody who frequently uses the library, as it's one of very few, if any, places that are open for for kids on the weekends or early evenings, I see a lot of teens in that area every time I go in. So clearly, there is a desire to have this. So for me, this is a yay.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
As a teen who was occasionally shushed in the old library, I agree. And I also appreciate the description that's in Exhibit A. I think that's one of the more succinct explanations of what it is we're trying to accomplish here.
Thank you.
It's a great project. So I move up that we authorize memorandum of agreement 23192 LIB 002.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Mr. Fantini to authorize the memorandum of agreement as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciag, vote please.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleo McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for the work. And no further business before the council. I'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Have a good night.